Thank you. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024 Ordinance Revision Committee Meeting. As a reminder, the ORC is not a decision-making body who provide directions and advice to city staff for ordinance revisions that will eventually go to the full commission for consideration. There will be two opportunities for public comment, one at the beginning and one at the end. Persons can speak for up to three minutes. And right now is our first opportunity. You can use the raise hand feature in Zoom, or if you are calling in by phone, use star nine if you would like to address the ORC. Staff will call on you by your name or the last three digits of your phone number, and please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. And Staleo, do we have anybody that would like to speak to us? Oh, I do see Ellie, Ellie and the attendees.
I raised hand instead of picking. I got buttons, wrong buttons all over the place. All right, Commissioner, this is being promoted. We have one attendee without a hand raised.
All right, well, we'll assume no comment.
Yep.
We do have another opportunity at the end. So then I will close our first opportunity for public comment and move on to item 3A, potential amendments to the Unified Development Code. I assume staff is leading this. Do you want to do one at a time?
I think, yes, I can present, but this is for a real discussion. We, these are potential, these are concepts we've identified. Anything is on the table, advancing them, not advancing, and then if advanced, fast flow or robust or minute. Yes, um, didn't have a presentation because I, I think everyone kind of liked to see the boxes and see the discussion easier. But I will refer you, or and I can also easily scream there, our, I clicked the wrong button. I can easily scream there, the memo that we provided. Give me one second to organize my disaster news. Here we go. All right, so for anyone watching in, we are discussing a memo dated October 22nd titled, Preparing the Next Amendments. If this goes as a back, it might be the Gulf Amendment. And there are four listed and I'll identify the four, and then I think we'll take one at a time. The first is an amendment to allow, it's listed as allowing a driveway to be a parking space in the R1 and maybe R2 districts. It's what also know, it also be referred to as allowing a parking space in the front yard. A second potential amendment is reducing, related to reducing the barriers to establishing and expanding student cooperative housing. A third potential amendment is related to our bike parking standards, specifically our, sort of the design of bicycle parking facilities. And the fourth is at minimum, sharing with the ordinance revisions committee that the city council has passed a resolution to consider allowing more flexibility for home occupations in residential neighborhoods. And Deputy Manager Hank Kelly will be, will be leading this discussion, and this is, this is on a very specific timeframe. And, and, and by resolution, has some goals already established. The other amendments do not have goals attached to them per se. So let me dive into the first one. It's about parking in the front yard or parking on a driveway. Parking is not permitted in the front yard, meaning the actual parking space. Parking space, the parking lot, parking structure, not permitted in the front yard. As a reminder, the front yard is the whole space between the front lot line and the building face. This would be different than parking in the front setback. Sometimes in a residential district, the front yard and the front setback are one in the same. If a house is built to the minimum setback line, say 25 feet, then it's the same. But if the setback line is 25 feet and the house is built 35 feet back, it's a 35 foot front yard, but only a 25 foot required setback. No matter, parking is not permitted in that front yard. It's a longstanding regulation going back to the beginning of time. And it does have a lot of benefits. You know, there's a lot of reasons for this rule, rule and requirement. But there is, there's a thing and that you are allowed, the driveway needs to lead to your legal parking space, which is defined as a garage, carport, parking space, parking lot. But if you have a driveway, you can park on it. You don't have to use your driveway, I'm sorry, you don't have to use your garage, you don't have to use your parking lot. You can also park in the, in the driveway. But it has come to light that this is a little bit of a barrier, could, a little bit of a punitive thing when we are allowing, when we are not requiring parking in the first place. And when we are allowing accessory garages to be turned into accessory dwelling units and so forth, we're saying that if you would have a garage, you, if you turn it into an accessory dwelling unit, you can no longer park on that driveway because it doesn't lead to a garage anymore. And I think in black and white, the code is saying you must remove that, that driveway. I think we are, no one is in, so this is a, a concept to maybe allow one parking space in the front yard. And it could be limited to the R1 district, matching the districts where accessory dwelling units would be allowed. And it's basically giving the okay to park in a driveway. Technically speaking, if you are parking in the front yard, your driveway might be one foot long, and it leads right to a parking space, an eight, an 18 by, an 18 foot deep, 10 foot wide. But if your driveway is that, is just there, that can be considered a legal parking space. It does, it could dead end at the front of the house. It doesn't have to lead to the side of the house. It doesn't have to lead to a garage. And, but this is an idea. This would be applicable whether or not you have an accessory dwelling unit. But, so it, it's not tied to that. It's not proposed to be tied to it. But it is because accessory dwelling units are, because the code has changed and we have fewer requirements for single-family land uses. You don't have to have a garage or a carport. You don't have to have at least one off-street parking space. You could even have that accessory unit. This is saying that it's okay to have a car parked in your front yard or to the side of your house and in be visible. I will stop there and invite discussion, feedback, and any shared experiences. Mr. Adams, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, the, you know, the one comment that I had on this was that it feels a little bit over-inclusive, meaning if the point of this, and I'm going to use a term that I realize is antiquated, but it means something in a lot to me, and I'm going to say it. If we're trying to grandfather and drive, we're trying to prevent like an inequity, right? If you're, if you're taking advantage of the rules that allow you to convert an accessory structure to a dwelling unit, and you have an existing driveway, we're trying to not disincentivize you from taking advantage of that. There ought to be a way to redefine driveway or create the carve-outs so that it's specific for that fact pattern. It could be that existing accessory structures and driveways as of X date get to avail themselves of the exception, but it feels like by saying you can park in your front yard that we're doing more than we want to do, and we're, we're addressing the problem, but we're also then allowing more than we want. And if the whole point of this is just kind of narrowly get these folks in so that they're not disincentivized, then we can, we can narrow the language in a way to make it attack that problem without creating potentially unintended consequences.
I would just say, I very much respect the opinion. I would just say, as staff considered that a little bit, and we just, and but we are proposing to discuss. It is true that it came to light from the accessory dwelling units and, and the, when the parking minimums changed. However, we did decide to discuss the, it just being simply a regulation that you can have one parking space and everyone can. I'm hearing your opinion though, and what I'm sensing is you may like part of the idea, but not as concept, as conceptually proposed for discussion, and that is perfectly fine.
Well, I think.
I just wanted to be clear that we, that I hear you about that, but we decided to, to start open.
Yeah, that's, that's fair. I just, when I was reading the staff memo, all the other rationales for not allowing parking in a front yard still seem to apply, right? Erosion control being the one that sort of immediately jumped to mind that, you know, I could understand why we wouldn't want people doing this still. And if the whole point, well, anyway, I was just sort of reading the staff memo on its face and tracking it and saying, okay, okay, here's the, here's what we're trying to do. Why don't we pursue something more narrow? I'd have to, I think at the planning table, I'd have to have a rationale for going beyond that, if we're going to go beyond that, and I guess I didn't see it in the staff memo, there might be one, but.
Commissioner Mills.
I think, yeah, Commissioner Mills, I don't have.
I think I'm in a similar camp. I think what I don't, like, making a non-perverse or, right, like, if, if there's, if there's a problem for the, for the conversion of an accessory building into an accessory dwelling unit, like, if this is a hindrance for that, then we should minimize that hindrance. I feel like I have seen, I have not counted, but I feel like I have seen probably a number of drives, with driveways around town that do not lead to a garage, and so, I mean, maybe this is pulling some of those into conformance, and so similarly, I think, like, if we are codifying, what is the actual practice going on? Like, maybe that's fine. But I think my bigger question is like, what is it? I don't want everybody parking in their front yard, and certainly not creating new curb cuts. So I think one of my questions is, what is the process to get a curb cut? And does, how would you think that this change would impact curb cut requests? Because I don't, I don't know how, like, if, if I currently don't have a garage and don't have a curb cut, but I want to build one, like, how can I do that? And what, I, I feel like that's important to know here.
I see, apparently there's one other hand raised. Uh, Commissioner Norton.
Um, well, yeah, I'm, I'm going to add on to Sarah's question. I'm still trying to envision what exactly this means. So somebody who doesn't have a garage, just has a house, would now be able to build a small concrete apron into their front yard and create a parking space? Or is this saying if you already have a driveway, you can just leave your car parked out in the front yard, or? I'm, I'm not sure I'm envisioning what exactly this would do or what you're trying to do.
I can explain that, and Commissioner Mills, I hear you, I hear the comments. And we can, I'll circle back. What? We did identify that, you know, it seems, it seems a tough burden for if somebody wants to do an accessory dwelling unit, but they're, and they're doing it in an attached garage. They're going to have to remove that driveway. It has, before we opened accessory dwelling units, we did every once in a while get a, a request to somebody converting their garage into, say, a family room, or, you know, use that to make an addition for their house. I can't speak to how well and scrutinized those building permits were done in the past and whether a building permit was obtained when somebody closed off their garage to make it a home office or a gym, or, you know, fully, fully closed off their own. But what we are saying is that, that it would be okay, that we will not then make you, make the tough choice between garage that I can only use for a single purpose, or garage and a driveway that leads to it, or convert my garage, but then lose all of my off-street parking. You know, that's, that's what we're saying. We're, and, and it could, it would apply if someone was doing a new build and wanted to say, nope, I don't even want, I don't want a garage, I don't need anything enclosed, but I do want a little parking pad. I'm just going to put it in the front yard. As conceptually written, it would be one parking space. Parking space is defined as nine, nine feet wide by 18 feet deep. We have said that it needs to comply with all other standards, meaning you have to be able to eligible for the first or, for the, for the curb cut in the first place. It has to meet all of the other design standards. The width of the curb cut. You, you still need to get to it by a driveway. The driveway could be almost, almost nothing. It could be right to the back of the sidewalk, or you could have some number of feet to the driveway and then the official parking space. But that is what we're, that is what we're saying. Think some of our logic for suggesting it comes from the, the number of driveways is important to regulate. How big the curb cuts can be important to regulate. And that's not, we are not proposing any changes to that. But we're saying there's really no fundamental difference in terms of all of the other benefits of regulating those. There's no fundamental difference between having that driveway lead past the front of the house or not. If, if you can park on a driveway, then that driveway seems like it should be serving as your official parking space. We're not expanding, talking about adding more driveways than you would normally be allowed, not wider driveways than you would normally be allowed. But we're just sort of acknowledging that, or we're asking the question, would it be okay to acknowledge you can park on your driveway, and it doesn't need to lead to a garage or a carport? About the process and how to get a curb cut, it's a permit from customer service, which is an arm of our public service, public services area. And if you meet the criteria, you get a driveway. Every lot gets one driveway. If you have more than 100 feet of frontage, you can get a second curb cut. However, there is distance requirements between how close two curb cuts can be together, so it works well, say, if all the properties on a block have their driveways on the west side. It gets a little bit, the spacing needs to be scrutinized when one person wants the driveway on the west and the other one wants it on their east side. So they have sort of parallel driveways. And you can't have a driveway too close to an intersection, whether it's a T-intersection or a four-way intersection. But if you meet those dimensional standards, you get a driveway. Commissioner Norton again.
Yeah, I guess, I guess to follow up. I totally understand Daniel and Sarah's concerns about could there be unhappy consequences from this, but I'm also thinking about all the people walking through the neighborhoods that I've known or have lived in. There are a lot of people who park in their drive, because even though they have a garage, it's really their storage unit. And they don't have a room inside the garage anyways, so I'm not sure. As long as it's not allowing new driveways to happen where they otherwise couldn't have happened in the first place, I, I certainly get if it was in a, if it was a garage and a functioning garage and they've turned it into an ADU, it makes no sense to have to pull the driveway out. Or if they've converted a garage into a family room. That's no different than just basically using the garage as a storage unit. I get that. I'm still trying to envision. And I suppose that could happen with someone building a house, and they just upfront decide I'm going to have a family room instead of a garage, but I would still like a driveway. I guess as, as I'm thinking it through, it's making more sense to me. It would be helpful, I think, Alexis, if, if you, if the staff could do some imagery, some drawings to just help illustrate what these, the, the different options might look like. Because I'm just having a little bit of trouble picturing in my head, or find some, even just go around town and take some pictures of existing units that have driveways that are using it. That, I, that just might facilitate, if you guys have the time or the ability, that might just facilitate people understanding what you're proposing and wrap their heads around a little bit better.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. We can do that. But part of it, you, you mentioned, visualize what we are proposing. If this is not, we, we don't necessarily have to advance this to the planning commission as a concept. If this is, if this does not pass muster with your group, with this group, that's some of the point of tonight's discussion of, you know, is this worthy of advancing in its current format with the additional background, or should it be scaled back and more narrowly tied to, to an ADU, or some, something like that?
Absolutely, advance it with regard to ADUs, or, you know, when structural amendments happen. I think the second question of should it be expanded to be allowed more generally, that's, to my mind, that's worth discussion. It's worth kind of presenting and seeing what the rest of the planning commission thinks. So I would say definitely, please move it forward in terms of the ADU thing with regard to whether or not to have a broader application. I'm happy to defer to my colleagues if folks have strong feelings about that. That's my perspective.
This is a silly question, but I just want to confirm that front yard means front setback, not front yard means grass.
No. The front yard means the entire space between the lot line and the building face.
Isn't that, well, that's what I meant by front setback. So why did you say no to that?
So if the front setback is 25 feet and the house is at 25 feet, then the front yard and the front setback area, one in the same. But if the front setback is 25 feet and the house is 35, 35 feet.
The whole thing is the front yard.
Yes, yeah.
And in any case, we are not talking about parking on the lawn. We're always talking about parking on a hard, on hardscape.
Right, that's, that's the thing. Yes, we are saying that one, parking space. Parking space is defined. There are standards for the materials for a parking space. There are standards for its dimension, so forth.
And currently, like, similar to Commissioner Norton, obviously, well, I park in my driveway and people all around me park in their driveways. And you're saying currently that's allowed because my driveway leads to a garage door?
Yes.
And if my garage, if I removed the garage door because I converted my garage to an ADU or a family room, my driveway would be out of compliance, and therefore I, my, the fact that I park in it would also be no longer allowed.
Right, your driveway would be out of compliance, so when you apply for that ADU permit, we would say, expand your scope of work to rip out that driveway surface.
Which I think we all agree is ridiculous. We don't want that. We want people to be able to leave the driveways. I think we, I think I also would imagine none of us have an issue with people parking in their existing driveways. But the concern would be new construction, right, and what that might do. So this is going maybe all the way, circling all the way back. Sorry, Commissioner Adams, it took me a minute to catch up to you. I think your suggestion was some kind of language that would allow existing driveways to remain, but not change the rule for new driveways. Is that correct?
Correct. That if we're trying to, if we're trying to solve the problem of, I have a garage and I have a driveway, and I can't convert that garage to an ADU without losing use and enjoyment of the driveway as a parking spot, then it feels like we solved that problem more narrowly without, again, there may be an argument for cracking it open and allowing people to park in their front yards. But even though I'm not generally sort of a cranky neighbor, I don't, I guess terribly love the idea of people just parking your car in their front yard. I don't know. It feels like a bad, a bad idea. I'm not used to seeing it. And this is like, I guess, my old moment for the day.
I would try, I would jump in to clarify. A front yard is a term in the zoning ordinance, in, in the ordinance. I, I am not, we are not talking about allowing parking on the grass. Like, that would be actually a hard no. If it helps just for this discussion, not using the legal terminology of the land use terminology, we're saying allowing a driveway that leads to nowhere. That's what we would, because if the driveway to lead to nowhere would be, then your parking space. We're, we're talking about allowing a driveway that either dead ends at the front of the house, or even if it's to the side, but it doesn't have to go all the way to the backyard. We're in, just conversationally, what we're talking about is allowing a driveway that leads to nowhere. The official language would be a parking space and a front yard, because again, it would be forward of the house, but we are not talking about parking on the grass. That would be a hard no.
How does that work? I, 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 maybe I need to pull the definitions. How do you define? Is parking space defined as something that's got a concrete slab under it?
Yes.
Okay, so you, it has, it can't be grass. It's got to be, I got it. Okay, all right.
Commissioner Mills.
I think one of my concerns about the, again, to Commissioner Avrins point, I park in my driveway too. And my, like, and I think most people do, and I think often it happens in front of the lot, house, like, at least part of the vehicle is not clearing that front part, so. And on the other hand, what I, if I often see that when there are multiple cars parked in driveways, it can go over the sidewalk. And so that's actually what I worry about. If it's a driveway to nowhere, again, I don't want to encourage that, and I also don't want to say the only way that you can have off-street parking is to build a garage, because also, I don't know that that's the better solution necessarily. So if right now, for new construction, the only way that somebody gets off-street parking is building a garage, like, again, hmm, not sure I love that. But I actually don't love the idea of it only being a parking space and that being limited in a particular dimension, because I worry that that is going to encourage things to go over, like, for cars not to pull all the way into that parking space and block the curb, or block the sidewalk. And so I don't know if the definition of parking space, if you can just give a really generous, like, so, the, the, just feels like there's a lot of additional things in this, like, driveway to nowhere, that I want to solve the, and codify, again, no new curb cuts for the existing practice, cool. But the second part is the part, what, what this means for new curb cuts, that continues to give me pause.
Okay. Uh, hands raised, and I'm falling down on my job. Uh, Commissioner Norton.
On my job.
Oh, okay.
You keep taking my job. I think Commissioner Avrins had her hand up first, actually.
Okay, so just a couple more things, so, oh no, I'm going to lose it. Nope, okay. One is, I, I would hate to see people being, for new construction, made to build garages so that they can have driveways. If that square footage could go to something else. So let's make sure we're not doing that. And I think to your concern, Commissioner Mills, I mean, there must be, enforcing is obvious, enforcement is obviously a separate issue, but there are rules about not blocking the sidewalk. But I wonder, there seems like there would be a sweet spot. So when you were saying, Alexis, oh, the, the driveway could be, the, the parking space could be like right up to the sidewalk. I think that feels dangerous to me in terms of backing in, backing out, and all, and, and the, and the danger of hanging over the sidewalk. But if you make it too long, then, as you're saying, Commissioner Mills, people are going to try and tandem park. So there's a sweet spot somewhere between, you know, 25, 25 to 32 feet or something, like, not enough for two vehicles, but enough that somebody's pulling, clearing the sidewalk nicely, and that you're allowing visibility on the sidewalk. I think when you have cars lined up on the sidewalk, then visibility is a little bit challenging. My other question was for planning staff. In terms of a best practice, do you see issues with something conceptually like grandfathering in existing driveways so that people can convert their garages to ADUs?
My immediate response is, I don't really see issues with grandfathering. It would be a, a little bit extra to, to make sure to suss out the, so grandfathering means you were legal when you, you were legal at the time you were built, and you got a proper permit for that. But the code has changed, and now you are no longer in compliance. So, like, there, this was never. like there, this was never legal in the first place, so there's like really nothing to grandfather. We would be, we, we'd have to attack it a different way, if, if you know what I'm saying, to say that existing, existing can convert, but new is prohibited.
Which is what the original ADU ordinance did. I mean, it's clunky, but the original one was like, if you have an existing detached garage, you can blah, 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 right?
Have you actually had to take, have you actually had someone take out a driveway? Does the city require anybody to do that?
We have certainly had people remove driveways that were illegally installed, that have nothing to do with ADUs, that they just plowed through another driveway or widened their driveways to, to an, um, a ridiculous amount. We don't have many AD, but in terms of ADUs, we haven't had all that many come in. And of those, I think only one or two can try to convert a, a side attached garage. And I think their permit says, um, in order to get their certificate of compliance, the, the, you know, the, the driveway must be removed or broken up so that it's functionally unusable. I don't know if, but I don't, I personally do not know if that's been carried to completion, like whether they, just because they got an ADU permit, I'm not sure if they actually did the work.
Yeah, those would be the few instances where some kind of grandfathering would be applicable to re, remove that burden from them, I would think. Can I jump in with just another?
Yeah, so you, then Dan, then me, then Alexis, should we move on to the second one? I'm sorry, seven thirty.
Yeah, probably thirty-ish minutes for everything, so yeah.
Yeah, so, so just to, I'm gonna, um, be like Commissioner Adams and be a little bit cranky too. One, one of the, there's an aesthetic thing here. One of the things I don't like are big garages that have houses attached behind them. So I'm having images of now allowing people to put in a garage where there, or a driveway where there wasn't one before and just put it right in the middle of the yard and kind of just have, that becomes the prominent feature. So aesthetically, it would make sense to me to allow people to put in a driveway to nowhere if it was off to the side maybe, or to the side of the house. I wonder, that's just my personal opinion about the aesthetics of driveways. But again, I wondered to kind of get to what Commissioner Mills was pointing out. And maybe again, this is, can help out a little bit with illustration. Maybe there are instances where it's clear that you can have a driveway. There was a garage there, you converted it. There was a, uh, to an ADU or a family room. Or you're gonna build a carport or something. You don't, you're not filling a whole garage. Maybe there are instances where there wasn't anything there, or there's a new build and they want to put in, um, a driveway and, and now you just create some, um, softer standards to be approved if demonstrate that there's adequate space for a driveway and it's far enough away from a sidewalk that it's safe. In other words, I get a little bit nervous if we try and anticipate every lot configuration and every conceivable option and then try and lay out precise numbers that have to be hit everywhere. I think probably you're getting to the point now where you can lay out some, um, criteria or standards for approving a driveway that a permit, permit person can look at and say, yeah, that's a safe place to, you can park there if you build it right and we'll give a permit for that. So maybe that's the place where you start to do that kind of approach. So again, I would be in favor of you kind of doing that kind of illustrative work and drawing work and bringing this forward. It sounds like a reasonable, I definitely think it's worth for ADUs and other conversions. Thank you.
The, the only thing I want to say, and this is just to check it, um, you know, I went back and looked at the definitions and there's a, I think there's a gap sometimes between how I read the words and how planning staff is used to reading the words and it, it's entirely possible I'm wrong. But in terms of people parking in their front yard, the way that it's defined, the parking space is a private area designed or used for the parking of a vehicle and accessed from a public street by a driveway or a private street. There's nothing in, in the code that specifies that the private street has to necessarily be paid in terms of, you know, accessing it. I, I just check those definitions and make sure that if we proceed with the current proposal, that it's not allowing people by the text of the plain English to let people just park in their front yard. That's all I'm saying. Cause I could be wrong. There could be something I'm missing.
Noted. Okay, um, so just thinking about my own, if I converted my garage into something, cause we're saying that what this is like suggesting in Arwin Districts, one parking space maybe located in the front yard, say, and say turn my garage into something else. It's a double driveway. Would this then say I can only have one car parked in it?
Yes. No.
Okay.
It would say of that, I think this where maybe a li, a little bit of grandfathering comes into play, but it would be saying that of that existing area, um, so let's say, you know, parking space is nine, but let's talk ten because I'm slow at math. Um, so your driveway might be twenty feet wide, but of your existing paved area, we're saying that there is a spot on that area that is ten by twenty. That's your official one parking spot. Do you have a driveway though? You can park all over it. But in, uh, and especially, especially in a redevelopment situation, or in, um, in a, where is my official parking spot? Your official parking spot is a, is a nine by eighteen area on your existing driveway. Your existing driveway was conforming. It, it was, it, where, but in the future, you have one official parking spot there, somewhere within your paved area.
So this all makes sense to me in a situ, in a scenario like that, where I'm converting, somebody is converting a garage into something else. It makes sense to me in new construction where somebody would probably already be putting in a curb cut because maybe they do a garage, then they're like, oh, cool, I don't have to do a garage. I can just do a parking pad or something. Where I'm having trouble is like the people that don't have garages and would be creating new curb cuts potentially to park in a new space that they create. Like that's the part I don't, I'm like not super understanding. So I mean, like, I'm, I'm all good with like, if we want to do this for like converting garages for ADUs or for other purposes, cool. If we want to do it for new construction, like, cool. I just don't know about the like, I have a yard, I don't have a curb cut. I park on the street now, all of a sudden now I can just like create this new curb cut. Is there a way to be like, just separated out for new construction and then for like the specific, like I'm converting a garage? Or is that too like?
Well, we can take a damn at it.
I think this is worth bringing forward. My other, only other thing, and I didn't look at like the exact definition of parking space, but I really hope to God that it doesn't say it has to be a concrete base.
I'll check.
You, you know where I'm going with that. Okay.
Yeah. So just for, to wrap up, is the sense, um, maybe refined draft and return to the ordinance revisions committee? Or, um, move straight to planning commission?
I, I would suggest bringing it back to us. There's enough discussion going on here.
Perfect.
I also, um, Commissioner Hammer's comment just made me think, oh my gosh, we don't have a paved, we, we have a gravel driveway with a, we're in the old west side, right? Does that mean I have to now spend money to pave my driveway? Please don't do that. It fits well with the, the character of the house. Thank you.
All right, number two.
Yep, our next question, um, um, is a potential amendment about reducing barriers to establishing and expanding student cooperative housing. We have been approached by, and I believe they've come to a planning commission meeting at sort of the public commentary session, but we have been approached by the ICC, which is the Inter Cooperative Council, um, with this request. And so the memo gives some back, you know, goes deep into the background and, and what is the current situation. We, the UDC regulates five group living land uses. Um, that's just for helping in categorizing and to find things easier. And those five group living are emergency shelters, fraternities or sororities, that's one thing. Uh, student cooperative housing, group housing and guest house. Um, the three of them are virtually identical. Uh, emergency shelter, I feel like that's a little bit self-explanatory. Group housing is a collective term that, what used to be rooming house or boarding house. And guest house is a generic and fancy term for a Ronald McDonald House. So, um, focusing on the three that are sort of focused, um, on, um, a particular age group of fraternity, sorority or student cooperative housing. Um, there are definitions for those. The group housing, they are permitted as special exception uses in the R two B district and the R four districts, that would be R four A through E. Couple of those are primary uses, while some are still special exception uses in the office district. But by the time you get to the commercial districts, they're all permitted by right. When you are a fraternity or sorority or student cooperative housing in the R B and multiple family districts, you have some youth specific standard. Some of them are more, um, physical, talking about minimum lot area, minimum building size, so forth. Some of them are a little more programming, like you have to have an onsite resident manager, you have to follow certain procedures. Group housing, it's noted in the staff report memo, that group housing also has some youth specific standards for it. It is not one in the same as the fraternity, sororities and co-ops. But there's also the dimensional standards just of those zoning districts, um, of the zoning districts, and some of the youth specific standards just repeat it, and some above and beyond. For our staff preliminary analysis to set the stage, um, there is one student cooperative housing entity operating in Ann Arbor. That's the, um, ICC Inter Cooperative Council in Ann Arbor. They are, by their own words, a nonprofit cooperative providing affordable housing to U of M, Eastern Michigan, Washtenaw Community College and other full-time college students who meet their, their own eligibility requirements. They feel that that separates them, fraternity and sorority, um, a bit. Um, and, but they say they're finding it nearly impossible to establish new or expand what their existing facilities. The qualifying sites are in short supply and a special exception use process is difficult to navigate. And then, but of the, we have done, using some of their own data that they provided, I've tried to do a little bit of a deeper dive to figure out what is going on for them. Of their sixteen properties, seven of them do not meet the minimum lot area required for the R four C district. It also means they don't meet the minimum, um, youth specific standard. But even without the youth specific standards, they're on non-conforming lots in the R four C district. Nine of their buildings are also too small. That is not the dimensional standard of the R four C. That's the youth specific requirement. And six of their sites, uh, don't meet the minimum, uh, lot area per occupant. That is actually also a youth specific standard and not a requirement of the R four C district. So, they, they, they have recommended or requested a lot of changes, um, a lot of changes, but, um, of their sites, there's really only one zoning district that's, that's really driving all of their non-conformities. So in terms of what to do about this, we've offered a couple scenarios to discuss. As you can see, they're not really like, it's not like proposed language. But a couple scenarios that sort of build upon each other and get a little bit deeper and deeper into relaxing some of the existing restrictions. Um, scenario one would be just eliminate the youth specific requirement related to minimum building floor area. So that's saying that you can have a, it would apply also to fraternities and sorority and student, um, student housing cooperatives. But it's saying, if your building can be any size, small building, huge building, there's no five thousand square foot mil, minimum building requirement. You also notice, I didn't mention this, but I'll come back to it. The language of the code says it has to be five thousand square feet before you even consider making it a, uh, cooperative. You can't take a small building and put an addition onto it. It has to already be a large building. That one change would make the ICC buildings conforming, all of them. It would still keep that same number of sites that are non-conforming to the lot area. It would not address the non-conforming sites for lot area, uh, per occupant. Um, I don't know the statistics about, uh, fraternities and sororities. And what it would do is if you can, if they or anyone can find a conforming lot in the R two B or R four districts, meaning the lot itself has eight thousand five hundred square feet, then they can pursue new, uh, new, new facilities. Scenario two would be eliminating both the minimum lot area and the building floor area. But no, it wouldn't eliminate the building floor area, but the lot area is functionally maintained because that's just a standard of the R two B and R four C districts. So it would help, again, make the buildings themselves conforming that they own. It would, but it wouldn't claim their lot area per, the non-conformities, nor their the small site, um, conformity, um, problems. But what it would do, it was also open up and say, um, it would allow sort of unlimited occupancy, but subject to say basic housing code, subject to the special exception use, so forth. Scenario three would be just eliminating all the youth specific requirements. Um, so your, the, your ability to expand or establish a new student cooperative would be solely, is it a conforming lot? And do you mean in the special exception use standards? But no, nothing about programming, nothing about a resident manager, nothing about establishing the occupancy with, uh, special exception use, n, n, nothing of that sort. Um, and so, and so those, that's a sort of, um, sliding scale of things that could be done. It doesn't go as far as, uh, we didn't suggest, but you can imagine there's a scenario for not making those special exception uses. There's a scenario for just doing away with all of that and just talking about group housing. That was beyond the scope of, that was beyond the ask and we didn't go there yet. So I will throw it back to you about any direction we might want to take, um, pros and cons. I can answer any questions, uh, and can troubleshoot and so forth.
Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Avren.
I'll make it really quick. Um, the, the only two pieces of feedback I had, I, I didn't, I didn't support option three, which is sort of like a elimination of a lot of those student manager requirements. And so I would push a little bit on the idea that it's hard to distinguish between other types of group living and fraternity and sorority houses. Um, and I just say that having lived next to a couple of them when I was a student, I found it very easy to distinguish in terms of how they use the land. Um, and I wouldn't lump fraternities and sororities into the changes that we're considering here.
I just had a quick question, uh, which was, is there a reason why group housing is not part of the proposed changes?
Only for, um, to keep the discussion slightly more focused on the ask. Um, I, we can certainly open it, but, um, since they are not already lumped in with group housing and group housing is separate, we focus just on their request. If, I wouldn't say though it's off the table.
Okay.
Require more, it would require more in depth, but that, and that's fine.
Okay, it feels like a similar enough use and also aligned enough in terms of the districts where it's permitted and special exception and some overlapping special exception use standards that it'd be worth considering. But we can focus, so yeah, I'll just go on record saying that we can focus for now on, on, uh, cooperative housing.
Anyone else? Commissioner Norton.
And Commissioner Mills.
Are there, I'm really struggling with this proposal for a number of reasons, one of which I'm very mindful that in this town, anytime you talk about doing anything that involves student housing, the neighbors come out of the woodwork and complain. We don't want more students living close to us. Having said that, it's pretty easy to discern the neighborhoods where there's heavy student housing and, um, I've heard lots of complaints from people who live next to fraternities and sororities about how unpleasant. it can be. Um, I don't really know much about housing that's occupied by the ICC units, if they have similar histories of um, not being good neighbors or group homes. I'm also a little bit nervous about if we distinguish between them, there ought to be really good reasons that are lawful for doing so. Um, and so I'm ner- I'm nervous about uh, where all of this is going and, and wanting to make sure that is correct. So I'm nervous on the one hand, I'm, I am honestly nervous about expanding yet more opportunities for um, multiple group student housing going into neighborhoods where they can create a lot of mush, commotion and maybe not be so well-maintained and not be good neighbors. That's just honestly a concern. At the same time, I'm concerned that we not be discriminatory or unfairly burdensome where there's valid housing needs and they would be perfectly fine neighbors. And I'm trying to figure out how to strike a balance between that. And I don't feel like I have enough good information about how to distinguish these groups. If that, if they're meaningful or, or valid ways to distinguish and think through what the implications of that would be in terms of coming up with appropriate standards. So I'm really struggling with this.
Commissioner Mills.
I have the same thoughts about, I, about maybe this is like the history of why co-ops got put with fraternities rather than group housing. And also like, um, it's interesting that it's just student co-ops. I, like, anyway, I, I have lots of questions. And so, but this is more like, so what do we do going forward? Um, I don't know if you saw my smile when you were saying like, it all comes down to one district and it's the R four C. And the R four C is the thing, that this is not the only, this is not the only land use in R four C that faces these challenges because what is it, eighty-five percent of lots, if I'm saying this right, eighty-five percent of lots in R four C are non-conforming lots, which is problematic for lots of things, like not just this. And so I feel like the scenario one is sort of a no-brainer, but I mean, it suggests to me that really fixing R four C is a bigger priority because that will solve not like, uh, it will solve lots of other problems. Now, maybe it creates some problems too, but like, it's not all of the, well, eighty-five percent of the landowners in R four C are similarly constrained. And so I feel like that's problematic. Um, I'm with folks that I think probably are, like scenario three is a bad idea, like altogether. Um, and I like the idea of having uh, I would, in order to consider scenario two where we take out the minimum s- floor area or lot area, whatever, which one it is, uh, lot area per person. I would want to understand what the other codes are. To see, I, I actually think that thinking a little bit through build, like what, what, what the, what other codes might apply, like maybe the building codes got us and so that makes sense. Um, but I do think that's, that if that's not true, if that's, um, then it would be useful to make sure that the zoning makes apparent that there are occupancy maximums based on the total size of the property. And so that is a, uh, that's what I would want to know, to decide between one and two, but again, it's, it's making the problem bigger, but like, if we fix R four C, that fixes lots of other things.
I guess I'm also trying to like wrap my head around this, this feels a lot bigger than when I first took a glance at it, um. So, Alexis, for like a little background, it's like the ICC came to you with these requests, is that how this happened? This was like a initiated and they want to bring their properties into compliance? And they want to separate themselves from fraternities and sororities?
Yes, uh, well, they, um, they have approached staff, they have proposed some individual council members. It seems like it may be on the horizon that um, they, we may get a resolution to um, look into this. So this is a little bit of staff and this was on, this is on the work program to discuss. And I think this becomes because they have been to planning commission at least at one working session and I think at least at one um, regular meeting commentary and um, you know, and the staff, we've had meetings with them. Um, um, so that's where it's coming from, um, and you know, it's, it, this needs to be at least talked about and, and I feel it's a, it's okay if our final response is we decline to take up amendments, but we can say that we honestly talked about it. Um, now, the ICC seems to feel that they are fundamentally different from fraternity than sororities. And um, on the one hand, I, I agree, they, you know, they literally sound different when you're next door to them. Um, they probably look different, they have a, but they're also extremely similar. They clearly cater to a certain age group demographic, they are group living. They, they are, there's more similarities actually, um, than, than differences. So it would be hard to say co-ops can be in smaller buildings, but fraternities need big ones. I, that's why we think it's important without getting a, a written advice from our attorney's office, but I sense this is what would come down, so that's, you know, I think there are legal implications, like you really can't separate them. That, you know, like they're, there's more similar similarities than they're not. It is perhaps a very valid discussion to talk about how are these similar or not similar than just rooming and boarding houses or group housing? There must be history about that, but these have been separate land uses for eons. And you know, so that would take more digging. But this is what they, and then they, um, but we've had a little bit of education with them, you know, they just, they talk about how hard it is to establish new ones, how hard it is to expand. And they um, are really critical of the special exception use process and the use specific standards process, standards. And we have been trying to educate them, it's not just those though. Just the R, as Commissioner Mills, the R four C district has a really high lot area relative to the actual existing conditions. And everybody gets caught up in that. And so there's a little bit of education, a little bit of misunderstanding about how our zoning works, a little bit of, um, I hear their desire to separate themselves, but I don't think the separation would stand up in a court of law. But they're a mo- they're a housing model that they're, they seem to be providing a service in the city. I don't think anyone is looking to kick them out or drive them out, and I think it's worth a discussion if, if we can help a bit or, or a lot.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I also don't like the idea of just sort of arbitrarily like, we'll, we'll do this for them, but not for the fraternities and sororities. Uh, but I also like, I don't know enough, like, why can't a co-op be small? Does it have to have like a certain number of like people as part of it? And like, does a fraternity have to have a certain, like, I don't know enough about. The inner workings of.
Yeah, when I say small, I don't mean like small number of um, members, I mean the building. We wrote it, yeah, we wrote it into our code, five thousand square feet.
So why?
I'm, I'm assuming it was honestly to put a barrier there. Um, but I can't, I was not around when it was.
Yeah, I know, but yeah, like again, like I don't understand enough about like how these groups operate to know if that like what is the fundamental difference between, I mean, I can kind of guess, but like between a fraternity, a sorority or just like seven, or a fraternity, it sort of, they're, blah, a co-op are just like ten friends that want to live together in a nine-bedroom house, you know, like a group house, if that's even what that, I don't know. I, I just, I feel like there's more to unpack. Okay, Commissioner Adams and then Commissioner Norman.
Yeah, I'm just skeptical of the idea there's some sort of equal protection issue with treating a fraternity or a sorority different from a cooperative housing group. Um, meaning like, they're not a protected class, this isn't, I'm not discriminating again, I like, I don't, I, I suspect the reason they're treated the same is an anti-student housing animus that's baked into the code. But if we're talking about changes to the way that we treat them and there's a reason to treat one differently than the other, I don't want to assume that we can't. Um, I've lived next to them again personally and I can tell you anecdotally, it's very different living next to a fraternity than living next to a cooperative housing, it's just different. Um, it's louder, um, there's a lot of other problems that flow from it and we expect those problems to be tackled by nuisance law. And I'm fine with that, but again, going back to the, the premise of the memo, which is that I can't treat them differently. I would push on that a little bit, I'm not a housing expert, I'm not a property law expert, but there might be good reasons why we want to maintain these, these rules for fraternities and sororities and relax them for the petition, but people who are asking us for changes. I haven't thought through it well enough to know whether there are reasons to do it, but I just don't want us to proceed on the assumption that we can't.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that, I, I didn't mean to suggest that we need to treat them the same, but if we treat them differently, we just have to do our homework and have a good reason for why we're treating each group, we're creating separate standards, um, I think that would be fine. It, it turns on me, I wonder if the planning, um, the master plan update committee, this sounds to me like an issue that would be really good to be thinking about with the master plan update that's happening, how the different kinds of housing opportunities around the city and how we're accommodating that and, and particularly student housing, since that's such a big part of Ann Arbor, so I'm wondering if we could get some guidance from what they're thinking on this topic to help inform deliberations uh, in terms of amending the zoning code.
You know, tomorrow at the downtown library, all day long.
If it, I mean, this maybe, if it's not been discussed by them, maybe this is something to ask them to bump up on their plate and think about and do it in a bit more holistic way. I'm really feeling like, feeling like to do any of the options you've suggested Alexis, which I understand you're kind of trying to get this on the table and create options. I would want to do a lot more homework and understand why are we doing this, what are the implications of doing this? I wouldn't want to do it just for the ICC and do it in a way that would open the door for other co-ops to come in and kind of not think through the implications of what that might create, if depending on how the language was written. So that, I think there's just a lot more to kind of noodle on, um, before saying, yeah, let's do this and let's pick option one or option two.
I'll just say as a member of this comprehensive plan subcommittee, I, I don't, we have not, to my knowledge, discussed this. So if you want to bring it up to them, if you go tomorrow, I think that's definitely worthwhile. We talked a lot about students, but not, you know, breaking it down.
My thoughts regarding the comp plan, I think that the comp plan might really help with the R four C problems because it is talking about super simplifying the number of districts, um, and there might not be an R four C anymore. But it hasn't yet and it may not get then to the land use categories. It, we, it might not provide guidance on how to regulate group housing different from single-family home, like it, it might push back on that level of detail, the comprehensive plan would be a guide and say like, you know, consolidate yourself down to four or six zoning districts. And so the slicing and dicing between R two B and R four C might be gone. But it, um, you would need a more detailed like zoning overhaul plan to say, all right, consolidate these land uses. It's one thing to consolidate districts, it's another to consolidate land uses.
Yeah, I, I understand the, I understand they're an- they're anxious to see something changed so they can do something differently, but this strikes me as an issue that warrants some more careful consideration and letting the plan process play itself out and then building off of that, sounds like a more prudent way to go than to kind of proceed independently and not, not take advantage of what we're doing with the comp plan update to kind of noodle on it.
Are you, are you, is that helpful, is all of this helpful on this one?
Um, it is, I think what we'll do then is we'll, um, um, keep this moving slowly, I will do a little bit more um, background, a little bit, a little bit more data dive and I'll get a little, and I'll start the process to get a little bit better legal advice, um, to, to start that process, so like, I, I'm getting the sense, maybe not drop it entirely, but um, answer these questions then so we can decide whether to advance it or, or not.
Commissioner Abrams.
Yeah, I just maybe I'll be a voice of uh, less concern and more more open to especially scenario one. Um, but maybe, and even two, I think I agree that three seems maybe uh, like too blunt of a tool. We could have a little more precision, but um, I, I'm open to not having there be a use specific minimum building floor area. Especially I think because somebody else, maybe it was Christian Hammerschmidt already put on the table, we don't even really understand why that, how that number came to be and why it exists. So one thing that would help us if this worked, and so yes, please, um, Alexis, let's not drop it. Um, and keep, keep working on it in some capacity, but I think one thing that might help is just to know more about, are there other use specific, other uses that have minimum building floor area requirements? And how is this compare? Um, and maybe helping us understand what it would mean to have, I mean, there are still a lot of regu- there are a lot, a lot of things that would regulate the density that could be allowed in any cooperative house. So if we took that away and it was a much smaller house, it still, there would be a limit to how many people could be there. So I think we just need to understand the implications of having it be loose or unregulated, the, the building floor area. Uh, and then maybe it's the same set of questions around uh, lot area as well, and I think I would be open to that too. I mean, I think these are, these are nice, these are good forms of housing uh, in a lot of ways, in terms of their density, their affordability, et cetera, so. Um, and often these are, well, maybe not in Ann Arbor, I was going to say they're often, um, uh, renovating and rehabbing existing building, which is, yeah, anyway, okay, I said enough, thanks.
All right. All right, mostly on my part, um, I will invite um, Planner Julia Fake to come in. Um, to, um, this would be a just parents' little kickoff, very opening discussion about bicycle parking.
Thanks Alexis, and I want to apologize to everybody that, that I'm not on camera, uh, recovering from, from I was small planned health, uh, occurrence. Um, but yeah, so, so bicycle, updating the, the bicycle parking standards uh, is something that came on the, the work schedule, the work plan for the planning commission. And staff have heard kind of feedback, um, through different points and different, you know, interactions and hearing things with developers and even like when we do site visits and stuff to, to confirm that the required parking is indeed in the configurations as proposed on the site plans, you know, as part of the building, uh, the certificate occupancy process. So what did it just kind of kick off this discussion? Um, so it's come up in multiple instances, it's part of the official work plan. And to kind of trace the contours of the types of things that the members of the RRC as representative of the planning commission would like to address and potential updates to the bicycle parking standards. So some of the things that have come across, and this isn't an all-inclusive list, but just to kind of get the brainstorming session going. Um, whether there's a need for dedicated spaces for cargo bikes, um, which can take the, the, the form of like different size spaces and not just one size fits all within the class A, class B, class C spaces. Uh, a need for e-bike infrastructure, including charging capacity. Um, whether we would require power outlets with a certain, you know, wattage capacity and surge protection, those types of things within class A facilities, uh, location access standards. Um, whether we are okay with class A parking being anywhere within a building or whether we'd want to require it, you know, on the ground floor or no lower than one underground floor or one above floor or within a certain accessible distance to, um, you know, a public right of way. We do talk a little bit about that language in the, in our current code. But one of the things that, you know, oftentimes we'll see, you know, the first thing that gets moved when there's need for more space for a fire control room or an electric room, the bicycle room gets moved a little bit further away. Um, so whether we want to think about those standards, um, or specific standards for class C spaces, uh, outside of buildings. Whether there's a necessity for three classes of bicycle parking or if this could potentially be reduced to two. Like whether we really see the need still for the three or condensing or rethinking those. Like whether we really see the need still for the three or condensing or rethinking those. Um, class A requirements and the cost include them in affordable housing projects. We've heard some feedback that, you know, because especially when projects are applying for MISHDA funding, every square foot counts. Um, so anything that diverges from the a very traditional, you know, almost, you know, box. Pillbox style development takes up additional square footage that isn't dedicated to to housing and it's an additional cost. For those projects and, uh, rack design standards, which I know there's a bunch of different, you know, potential rack standards. Um, Boston racks versus other racks versus just specific design. Features that, you know, have to attach to the frame of the bike and you can't suspend from the wheel or mandating a specific. Uh, style of rack. Um, so just to kind of kick off the discussion, I was doing just some preliminary research and Mariana's here because like we're gonna be working on this together. I pulled the city of Vancouver, British Columbia's ordinance, um, because they just updated and like they touch on a lot of these different areas. They don't use Boston, uh, standards, which a lot of cities do for the the actual racks and stuff. But I pulled them just to kind of what are some other cities, like big cities that are seen as being bicycle friendly and. Uh, progressive as far as bicycle infrastructure are doing, because they re, uh. Um, amended their ordinance in June of this year and also included our, uh. Parts of code as an attachment, just to kind of kick off the discussion, but I'll stop talking and, uh. Happy to hear what you all are starting to think about in terms of of potential update areas.
Commissioner Adams.
Um, I saw I read the Vancouver ordinance and I also read the comment that we got from Adam Goodman. That had the Boston guidelines, um, reference and I pulled those as well. Um, I would really encourage folks to look at the Boston guidelines. They're awesome. Um, the one, there's a few things about them that I prefer over the Vancouver approach. One of them is the fact that. It appears that Boston is doing this administratively, so they have some kind of general ordinance that. Authorizes some group within the city to issue these guidelines, um, publish them. They're legally binding, but they can be sort of updated and enforced administratively. Exemptions can be granted administratively. And I think they're, because of that, they have more freedom to. Include diagrams and charts and do's and don'ts and. Um, they're, they're, they're just very easy and user friendly to use and pick up. And the one issue they tackle extraordinarily well is the style of rack. Which is somebody who rides a bike a lot around downtown and has a bunch of different kinds of bikes. The style of rack downtown, the diversity is a problem. Um, the fact that we don't have a standard for, um. It doesn't have to be the Boston standard necessarily, but. The way that Vancouver set theirs up, it doesn't really do all the things that Boston's able to do because of not only how they've administratively issued the. The guidelines, but how thoughtfully they went through the, the, they've got four or five pages dedicated to the style of rack and it's not just one, it's. Multiple, then it it provides do's and don'ts, right? Do these three or equivalent? Don't do these because they don't accommodate, they don't accommodate different kinds of bikes, and that's a huge, huge, huge issue. Um, so just in terms of the the approach and the the emphasis on regulating that thing. Vancouver's to me felt like it's over prescriptive on a lot of stuff that doesn't actually ha- add a lot of value. And under prescriptive on the stuff that as a cyclist adds a lot of value.
I hate that. So so what I'm hearing is exploring, not just exploring what we can do within the UDC, but some sort of decoupling of some of these. Requirements from development requirements and seeing like trying to think about it more comprehensively. I know staff, just, uh, just as a parentheses, I haven't reached out in much depth yet, but. Staff in the transportation department is doing some work on kind of the general bicycle racks. Uh, in more public spaces and stuff too. So, or maybe suggesting Commissioner Adams, decoupling from. Site plan standards and thinking about it a little bit more holistically.
Well, yeah, you could do it. You have something general in the code and that that authorizes the creation of of a twenty, you know, a twenty page guidance or administrative. Document the way Boston set this up. That's easy to change and the benefit of that is that. We don't have to get it right in the first shot. It doesn't have to pass through planning and council to make a change. And given that the technology, especially with e-bikes is evolving all the time, the needs are evolving all the time. It, it, having that flexibility, especially to have somebody at the staff level to be able to say. You know, with respect to a project. You know, we realize that there's hardship here, so we're going to exempt you. You can do some of that in the code. It's just easier to do it administratively. So there's, there's, it it feels like as a legal framework for what we want to do, it it seems to check more boxes. And then overall, again. I think Boston's, they really nailed it, like in terms of the issues that I want to see in a document like this.
Christian Mel.
Um, thanks. I agree. I looked at both of the documents and I mean, I think that there's probably similarities. One is just. prettier and user friendly too. Um, I would note that there's some things that are included in both about. Lot, um, like bathrooms and showers at the end, and I think like. We should have a discussion of whether that's necessary or important. Um, but I think ultimately, like, I mean, we blessedly have a number of cyclists on. Planning commission, and yet to my knowledge, none of us necessarily live in a new multifamily unit. Where, which is requiring a bunch of this bicycle infrastructure. And my biggest concern is that, again, in. The new residential, it gets. Put in bad locations or like my perception is when a developer says it's up in the unit. That it's actually in a closet that is for something else and is not for bicycle parking, and I don't know that that should count. But I don't live in a multifamily structure. And maybe that is a benefit, but maybe there's a limit to how much we want that to count. And so. I wonder if before we go too, too deep in this. We pull in folks from the bike, what, what is it called? I just looked it up. The Washington. The walk bike Washington Association or something like a, an SOS to the biking community. Who again lives in the building types that we are seeing to understand like. Bike room in unit, maybe it's a mix, but should there be a maximum of how much is in each of those things? Um, how, what, what do we think about? Class B versus class C versus class A, um, ki- I, I. I have thoughts as a going to a non-residential establishment about as a visitor. Or an employee, what I like to see, but. Uh, particularly like folks in in the kind of new residences that are coming through our. So I think that that would be real helpful as a next step.
Alright, thanks. Commissioner Horton.
Uh, yeah, so yet, uh, again, I'm wondering if this is an issue that's been addressed at all by the planning update committee, mesh plan update committee. Um, and whether that might be folded in in some meaningful way. I totally agree with, so I'm a. Regular biker downtown. I'm often frustrated that I can't find a place. A real place to lock up my bike, so I often park it, you know, I lock it to. Signs that probably aren't supposed to do that because I just can't find any other place. So there's definitely a need for more. And m- m- more and, um, better design parking structures downtown, and I get that's part of this. I totally get what Commissioner Mills is saying. It does. Would make sense to me to at least reach out to some of the. Maybe some of the new apartment complexes that have gone in and. Put up posters and ask people to provide feedback if they feel like they've been adequately served by the biking facilities, bike parking facilities. That have been installed in those places.
Um, or or even if they're being used. I mean, I wonder like, yeah, I, as a new e-bike owner, uh. And switching over officially and, yeah, live a decent ways from from City Hall, but, um. You know, thinking about where bike parking would be in my apartment complex, like if it's too inconvenient, especially for an e-bike. You know, I store my bike in my living room. It's a nice like conversation piece, but it's more convenient. I feel more secure. And stuff like that. And like, I wonder, like, doing some of these site visits, like you're down in the corner of a garage, uh. Kind of not well labeled. One thing that I did see that I like, like if we do still have internal bike rooms. I think Vancouver, it might have been Vancouver, Washington, actually, when I was Googling, uh, required glass windows. Which make, would make a huge difference because, you know, you're coming back, you know, from a nine o'clock class, a student. Do you really want to go into the garage and then go into a bike room with no, you know, poorly lit, no window and stuff? And thinking about those types of things too, like are they even being used as they are now? So I think that's a great idea that you both have mentioned.
Yeah, so this is definitely worth a little bit of research and study before putting anything in place because it's gonna be so important. And I I also agree with Commissioner Adams. I think you could craft a revision to the UDC. To grant the authority and set some standards up that would then be used. That the staff could then use to create guid- guidance or administrative rules. That would apply and that would facilitate changing with changing technology and such much more easier, but. You would want to make sure you create the authority and the and the kind of guiding principles or standards that makes sense in the in the ordinance itself. Um, and to do that, it would be really good to do just some background research. So I'm all for this. We need better, more and better parking for bicycles. Downtown and for these facilities. Let's figure out how to do it right. So thank you for putting this on the agenda for things to to work on.
Commissioner Abrams.
Um, for staff, is there any precedent for something like that? Sorry for this kind of outside the E- UDC administrative changes to ordinances situation. Yeah, Alexis.
It pays to be like old as a dinosaur. Um, before the UDC, when it was, um. Uh, the handful of chapters, um. We had land development regular, we had chapter fifty seven, which was the, I think the title was subdivision and land use control. And it had, um, attachments A, B, C, and D. And those were outside, so those were reference materials. And one of the attachments was the site plan required information. Um, and so the actual code, it was codified that you have to follow the guidelines. And, um, so we do have, we we did that. Um. We incorporated it and we codified it. We moved it out of the guidelines administratively updated format into the UDC when we did that whole. We did the Zoro thing, um, because we looked back and in twenty some years. The land development regulations were never actually updated, like it was pulled out in order to administer, do all the things that we were hoping. That that what Boston was hoping to do. I think I wrote it down, um, you know, keep it up to date easier, faster, better. But we didn't actually do it. That's probably not a good reason to not even try it again, but, um. Uh, yes, we have precedent, but bottom line is we have precedent. It can be done. It's legal. It's a way to do it. There are some pros and cons to each one. Um, a pro would be. Streamlining the UDC, um, and getting mu- much of these technical details out of it. And, um, potentially updating things a lot faster, um, keeping things more up to date. A con would be. You do, you are asking people to look in multiple places to get the big picture.
Uh, wouldn't another con be that there wouldn't be like a public, public deliberation? Of changes and an opportunity for public participation. Or members of the public volunteering their time and expertise to debate that.
Yeah, another con can be if the rules are too loose, they can be administered in a way that's unfair. Some people.
Yeah, well, I mean, um. I think you can definitely craft it and structure it, um, you know, you can create rules around the guidelines themselves. You can say, like, if they are adopted by resolution. The resolution gets discussed in a public format, um. Just becau- uh, just because they're not an ordinance, which de- definitely does get a public hearing. Um, the planning commission's work is still done in a public format, so they, we could probably get the same amount of participation. Um, per se, same amount of participation. It kind of, the devil's in the details. It depends on exactly how you craft them and exactly how you structure them.
So, yeah, so I mean, I think I, um. Maybe I feel, I feel on the fence here, like on the one hand, I think that's a really interesting idea and I. Would almost see this as a, as a opportunity to pilot something that probably there are other opportunities in the UDC for a similar structure, not just bike parking. But then it also feels funny that maybe we're. Uh, cycling back to an older structure, an older format, but but anyway. And then, um, but it also feels like that's something that would take quite a long time to. Craft and do, and I wonder if there are some lower hanging fruit that we can move more quickly on in terms of updating the bike. Or bike parking standards and ordinance, because I think it is pretty, uh, it needs, it needs it. I think in a kind of almost desperate way. So I, I think, um, yeah, I like the idea of something which has, which is a bigger. You know, a bigger transformation that might have more widespread impact. But I worry that if we do that, nothing, that will take two years for us to actually like finalize and get through the. Machine and in the meantime, we're s- we're stuck with what we have now, which I think it needs some help, so. Thanks.
Yeah, and just to kind of comment on that, from what I'm hearing from a number of the, of of the members of the, um, ORC. There's kind of two sets of two big umbrellas of issues at hand, like bicycle parking in general. And bicycle parking as we regulate it within the UDC. So like UDC, like. It would be more difficult for us to regulate, like to come up with like a downtown. Bike comp plan, parking plan. I think we definitely will be working with transportation and, because I think they're. Talking about some of those more types of ideas, because they have more jurisdiction over, you know, rights of ways and those types of things, but, um. Thinking about it within the the purview of the UDC of like required parking, you know, as its most driest form. You know, required parking in new development. Which is UDC directly within UDC and tackleable. Versus a bigger thinking about how we think about bicycle parking in general. And I think part, that's part of the the distinction that I'm hearing also, like not just how it's codified. But like the extent to which we want to address these issues. And whether it's just something like, yeah, the probably would be lower hanging fruit to update the standards and like, you know, all bicycle parking. Class A must be, you know, within, you know, X feet of, you know, a public entrance to the building and those types of things probably would be a little bit lower hanging fruit. But it does leave outside, uh. It does leave these other issues that are, I think, real to all of us that ride bikes. Um, off the table, at least in the short term.
Commissioner Adams, did you have your hand up and then put it down?
Yeah.
Oh, but you're good. Okay, Christian.
And, um, yeah, um, my, I'm sorry for interrupting a little bit earlier. Um, I just was trying to point out. But I think there are multiple things going on here. Maybe I'm going to repeat what what, um, Mr. Shaikh just said, but. It is, I'm thinking this through, there's a problem with lack of adequate parking downtown right now. That's a problem. And is that a DDA thing maybe, or is it just adding some more? You know, taking out parking spots and putting bike racks in like they do in the summer. Maybe that would solve a lot of that problem. I don't know if that's something that you do through the zoning code. And the other thing is what we're doing in the zoning code and requiring new development to add parking facilities as a standard part of the feature. Those seem to be two distinctions. And then the other distinction we're drawing is what do you do in the UDC itself, which requires all of the. Proposal and city council approval and adoption processes and what are standards that can be, um. General enough and. Transitionable as technology changes and stuff that is more appropriately done through a, an administrative rule or an attachment or. However you call it, I think it's worth exploring, figuring out what's the right division between where to put things. Um, my, what I was trying to caution was and kind of building on, on, um, Commissioner Abrams comments, we just. To the extent you put things in attachment, you want to make sure it's done in a way. That there's opportunity for people to be heard if they need to be heard, or that there are rules and standards in place so that people are treated fairly. That some people don't get exemptions unfairly when other people do and and that kind of stuff. And you can do that. It just takes some careful drafting. Um, and so I think that's possible, and I don't think that's a ten year endeavor. I don't think doing that is any harder than just making the revisions in the UDC itself. Um, it's just kind of carefully thinking through what needs to be in the UDC and what can we put into guidance. So, um. So definitely, I don't know, maybe Alexis, if. The current crisis of the lack of downtown adequate parking is a zoning code thing, or is that something we are trying, the city is. Maybe is trying to work with the DDA to think about how could they add more facilities in the near term to solve the problems.
There's, there have been some, and Alexis compliment as well, but there, I know there are conversations about how can we. Do, like within the DD especially, since the DDA administers a downtown parking structure. do, like within the D D A especially, since the D D A administers the downtown parking structures and like with the changes in use post pandemic of downtown parking and downtown parking uses and stuff about how to rethink bike parking within the existing parking infrastructure managed by the D D A. I know there's some conversations going on there. I know there's conversations going on within the transportation department that kind of looks a little bit more about bicycle parking a little bit more in general, especially in downtown area, as it pertains to more right of way and sidewalks and those types of things. There's a little bit of overlap there with like D D A requirements for, you know, how bicycle parking appears on the streetscape. And then, yeah, there's our development requirements of like how is parking incorporated into new developments? So there's kind of, kind of split up a little bit like that.
I'd only add that, Commissioner Norton, and you're sort of, you're highlighting how the doubt, we regulate downtown differently. We have different expectations of downtown and downtown is a little bit of a different animal. Downtown is a special parking district and it applies to vehicle parking, but as well as bicycle parking. Land is particularly valuable downtown. And so we have old developers, even before there were no, before we have no off the parking requirements, we said, you don't need to provide off the parking. Your land is valuable. Our D D A, using their, the captured dollars, we will provide the public parking, will provide the parking. And it sort of extended to, but maybe we didn't nail it correctly, but it's extended to bicycle parking. And it's, it is the, where the interplay with the U D C is, is there's not, there, it may be real, there's not enough bicycle parking downtown. Okay, fine. But whose responsibility will it be to provide that? We can push it on the developers. But land is precious, their floor area is precious. They're probably going to put it in the basement or someplace that's not nearly as convenient because you're competing with revenue generating sources. You're, that bike parking would be competing with retail and coffee and restaurants and so forth. Or is it the public responsibility to provide parking? And in that case, yeah, it's got to go in the street or on the sidewalks or in the parking structures need to have bike rooms. So there's overlap there. There's overlap in you, yeah, there's overlap. And this would be developing this scope might be, one of the goals of this might be to increase the amount of class B or C parking downtown. But you, we are, if we are pushing that on the private development, then we are competing with revenue generating floor area.
I don't have anything useful to add to this, except that I'm glad that we're gonna take a deep dive because I think that with like, you know, the e-bikes becoming much, much more popular and the us removing parking minimums, I think that making sure that we have alternative, easy to access alternative transportation. Maybe this will lead me to start biking. Something else. Okay.
So this one will come, so this was just a kickoff. So this will come back to you. I know that Julia was listening intently. I won't even try to summarize, but this will come back. This will take several iterations, hopefully not two years. But this will be a few months in the making and the scope will have to be fleshed out and evolved.
Definitely, yeah. Mariana and I are both on this one and definitely like taking into account, you know, outreach to some of the groups, like figuring out like what we can find out about what's working and not working on the ground with some of these new developments, like, because we have our observations, but they're still, you know, at the building permit stage and connecting with other city departments that are working on on similar types of issues and stuff too. But really, really appreciate all the conversation and, and excited to move forward with it. Mariana, do you have anything to add?
Right now, other than as a biker, I'm also excited to move forward with it.
All right. Our time management is fantastic. And so our last final agenda item is our number four potential amendment. As mentioned, we have a council resolution to talk about home occupations and accessory commercial units. And Deputy Planning Manager Hank Kelly will be leading this charge because they love a challenge.
Hello. Good evening to everyone. I have a brief slide deck to just focus our discussion and orient around this topic. Which I will share for those of you following along at home, we will add this to the packet after this meeting so that you can access it at a later date. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, great. Let me make sure I can also still see all of you. So as an introduction, I know that at least some of you, I think three of you, I think Commissioners Abrams, Sam Richman, and Mills perhaps were on the commission in twenty twenty one, the last time that home occupations was updated. It was, I, I guess the word would be liberalized at that time. It was given performance standards. It was definitely considered from a lot of different angles to think about how home occupations could be made easier with, in particular, residential districts. In September of this year, City Council passed Resolution twenty four dash three six eight, first introduced August nineteenth, which directs the planning commission and staff to consider more flexibility for home occupations in residential neighborhoods. The text of that resolution is attached to your agenda. Or you can search for twenty four dash three six eight in our legislative records. As a orientation to what our definitions are that we're working with here, a home occupation is an accessory use of a non-residential nature performed within a dwelling unit or within an accessory building by members of the family residing in the dwelling unit and not more than one additional employee. An accessory use is a land use that is subordinate in use area or purpose to a principal land use on the same lot, serving a purpose naturally and normally incidental to such principal land use. And an accessory building is a building that is subordinate in use area or purpose to the principal use and principal building in which an accessory use is contained or conducted on the lot. These buildings can be attached or detached to a principal building. When attached, they shall be considered part of principal building for setback purposes. Here in our accessory use table, you can see all of the districts, residential and mixed use where home occupations are allowed. Because our mixed use districts have much more liberal access to commercial activity, primarily this discussion is focused on these residential districts and what is, how to think about expanding access to commercial activity and in these areas, as I understand the directive from council. The text directs us to consider, but not limit our review to the maximum permissible floor area, the numbers of customers per day, customers at a time, number of allowed non-resident employees, and potentially allowing uses not customarily incidental and secondary to a residential use. So expanding these resolution areas of interest, the ones who are specifically brought forth in the text a little further, here's what was identified in the council resolution. The letter refers to the letter within the Unified Development Code under the Home Occupation Performance Standards, which are in section five point sixteen point six subsection H. So permissible floor area currently across two different performance standards, we can see that.
Are they frozen for anybody else?
No, I was just wondering the same thing.
Hank, if you can hear us.
Can't exceed the dwelling unit square footage. I'm sorry, did I hear someone speak up?
Yeah, you cut out for like forty seconds.
Oh, no. Let's see, I'll just start over with this slide. So these, these letters refer to the U D C performance standard. The ones that I've pulled out for review on this slide are again from the council resolution. Please stop me again. Don't hesitate to interrupt if my audio cuts out. I can also take my headset off. It helps. So right now, taking these one by one. The maximum permissible floor area, which we were asked to consider is across two performance standards in five point sixteen point six H. So you are allowed to have twenty five percent of the floor area of your principal dwelling unit dedicated to a home occupation. Or in an accessory building, actually two thousand square feet provided that doesn't exceed the square footage of your principal dwelling unit. Customers per day. After much deliberation in twenty twenty one, twenty four client visits per day was landed on. That is the current regulation. However, a maximum of six clients at a time between the hours of eight A M and eight P M is currently allowed. The allowed number of non-resident employees is currently one. You can have more than one home occupation within, within your home, but whether you have one or four of those, you can only have one non-resident employee. And then allowing uses not customarily incidental and secondary to a residential use. I think the word that comes to mind for this is existential. What is, what is our logic about accessory uses generally? Because accessory uses as applied throughout the entire Unified Development Code and other zoning logic is that these are uses subordinate in the use area or purpose to a principal land use and on the same lot and serving a purpose naturally and normally incidental. So I'll come back to this slide, but I want to point out that within this section, and I have the U D C section pulled up, we can go line by line so that it's sequential if you'd like, but these were other items not specifically called out, but that we are not limited to. So storage of goods, materials or equipment currently required to be within the interior of a building. So no stacks of lumber or other materials that are stored outside. Those should all be stored inside out of view. The hours of visits, ten thousand pound gross vehicle weight is your maximum for trucks and vans that are serving the site on a regular basis. Mechanized equipment should be used within an enclosed building. A generic kind of performance standard across nuisance. So no generation of dust, odors, vibration, or electrical interference or fluctuation should be perceptible beyond the property line. All of the home occupation performance standards apply to home occup, all of the same, basically performance standards in this list. It also applies if you're using an accessory building. And I truncated these because I, part of them were pulled forward in the other list. Home occupations should be conducted in conformance with applicable federal, state, and local laws. So if you want to have a barber shop in your home, that's a licensed profession. You can do it within the other performance standards, but you need to make sure that you, you get that license in order to be in compliance with us as well. And the performance standards apply to all the home occupations in a dwelling unit and accessory structure. So I will foreshadow. So I think it's a couple of discussion areas that I would like to open up for conversation this evening. The, the last one, which we, we don't need to take first, but I'll, I'll, I'll show you. I think when many people think accessory commercial units, they're not necessarily thinking of, in, in the conversation that's happening within introducing commercial, small scale commercial into residential neighborhoods under this banner accessory commercial units. I think that many people are thinking of something more like this and not having a painting studio in a converted garage. So if we are thinking about something like this, it introduces a lot of other questions for us. And one of the biggest ones that it introduces, which is very sticky, is the front setback. So to permit a unit like this in a residential district, right now, we were just talking earlier in the meeting about allowing parking within a front yard and front setback. I mean, this would be a big change to how front setbacks are considered. Why, we would need to ask ourselves, why would we allow this for a commercial structure and not for a residential purpose? So does this open up the front setback for all kinds of building? And I think it opens up a conversation about what is our community value around this space? What, what are we hoping to prioritize more as a community aesthetically or commercially? There are considerations that, you know, may seem smaller, but around commercial enterprises, not so much signage is regulated by district. Right now in our residential zones, you would not be allowed to have signage this big. It would be, I think, Julie is our, our signage go to, let her speak up, but I believe it's about one square foot in our residential zone. So if we allowed commercial signage, then also student rental or whatever, whatever other signage would, that would be that big. And then the connection to our comprehensive plan, we are actively considering how to have more integrated districts and to simplify our districts, consider live work. This is something that does, if modifying the parameters of home occupation seems one thing, considering how to change more broadly may, I'm just wondering how it would put us in step or out of step with the comprehensive plan? And then goals in economics, I guess this is a this larger larger question, but the, one of the my understanding of the rationale of accessory commercial units is to introduce pedestrian facing retail and to add vibrancy to neighborhoods, but it's also often talked about in terms of affordability and access. And building a accessory use of kind of any kind, but in particular built to commercial standards would not be cheap. So thinking through whether or not we would actually be introducing affordable commercial or if we're just introducing commercial is something that I would wonder about is considering the economics of this because in order to have a successful business and depending on your business model, you may be dependent on a high volume of customers to turn a higher profit in order to pay down your, your note on a new building. And that means there's an incentive and an interest there in having a higher number of patrons. And also you may need more than one non-resident employee to operate something like this. So it does open up quite a lot of things, but going to back to the areas that we are specifically directed to look at by council. I am curious to know the thoughts of the committee members, what your feelings are on these. And I can also, if desired, I could just pull up the U D C and we could go line by line through the performance standards, if you'd rather do that than focus on the resolution areas of interest. Now open it to discussion.
So being that it's eight fifty, how far are you trying to get tonight? Because this feels like a really big discussion.
How did it get to the eight fifty already?
And I'm having like a lot of flashbacks from twenty twenty one about why we did twenty About why we did twenty-four people and.
Yeah. Um I guess appetite for opening up particular areas, just gut reactions. Uh I don't, does not have to be a particularly sophisticated reflection, but if if you do remember some of the conversations around limiting the customers per day or non-resident employees if this early feedback to what seems like the right standard to it's to go further to meet the council request to for yeah, provide further access, I guess.
I'll just say quickly and then I'll go to Commissioner Abrams and Commissioner Mills. Like I'm all for exploring this for sure. I mean, I just remember back to twenty twenty-one, like we had a lot of conversations about this and we didn't know if we landed on the right things. But I just remember talking like in detail about, say, somebody teaches like Pilates and they're a little bit like, I mean, we were just like going through weird math. So like, I definitely don't think that we did it a hundred percent correctly necessarily, and I think there's room to like figure this out. Um I would, I guess my one thing is like, I would like to see if other cities have have done something similar. Um because I think the idea of putting more commercial in residential neighborhoods is great, but I I hear your concerns like signage and and those things. So I would just be curious if other cities have expanded their um home occupations to include like commercial businesses in residential. Okay, Commissioner Abrams and Commissioner Mills.
Just two quick things. One is, um, oh my gosh, I think I'm tired. I keep like having them and then my brain keeps dropping them. But one thing I do remember, which is I think generally what would be helpful for me is actually to hear from people who have home occupation. Like what I remember from last time is that we changed something and then somebody came before us and they said, do you know what you've done? You did this really foolish thing that made that made no sense from where I sit and this is how I use my, this is my home occupation. So I I don't, I'm not aware of any of us being people who who take advantage of this. So I I think that would be really important. Um because I have no idea if if the customer per day or the number of customers at a time is constraining something or if it or if it feels quite generous. So things like that. Uh and then my other question was, um, uses not customarily incidental and secondary to residential use. Don't we already allow? Uh is it true that the current list is limited to uses which?
The first performance standard is that it is limited to uses customarily incidental and secondary to residential uses.
Maybe I don't. Can you tell me what that term means, customarily incidental?
Uh, well, that is a point of uh some interpretation, I guess, but this uh I'm still sharing screen, right?
I mean, things which are kind of com- compatible with residential use. Or?
Um, well, incidental and secondary is what it is the is the actual current language.
accessory, right? You're saying that all accessory uses have that same language? Or no? When you said it's existential, I thought you were saying, oh, if we change this for home occupation, we're actually changing what we mean by accessory use.
Well, if it wasn't incidental, for example, or if it wasn't secondary, let's say it was the primary use, then that is uh kind of flipping on its head what the in the understanding of accessory means and why it, why, how how that logic is applied throughout our code.
And I know we don't have a lot of time, but I I understand secondary. I think it's incidental that I don't totally understand. So if anybody else can help me, you Hank or somebody else, that would be great, but I want to let other commissioners chime in. Thanks.
Um, I like the idea of going to the folks who are interested in liberalizing this further in some way to understand what the use cases that we didn't consider. I think that would be really helpful. In my mind, um it seems like going on the very first bullet and actually Hank, if you wouldn't mind sharing your screen again with the like list of things that would help me. Um, going up on the very first one to forty-nine percent or no more than fifty percent. Like again, I understand accessory to be like it uh and I feel like one of your definitions earlier, uh can you go to the slide where you show your definitions page? Sorry, um maybe it's a couple more.
Here?
Yes. So if an accessory use is subordinate in use area or purpose, um I I the use of or here, not the lawyer, but like I think it seems like somebody's got to live on the property. Like if in order to count it a home occupation, because you need to be, you need to be one of the employees there, like.
You must be a uh member of the family residing in the dwelling unit currently, which is why only one outside employee is also specified.
Exactly. And so I think that that makes sense, but this idea of the use area or and that's what I couldn't remember is if it was and. So I feel like it being half, like going from the twenty-five percent of the amount of the square footage of the principal dwelling to up to half. And similarly, making sure that the total square footage across the thing is like it's just as much dwelling as it is accessory, seems like a way to open up more opportunities. If you have a really big house, then and you've got a really big accessory building that is your home occupation, awesome. So that's the place where I would see most opportunity. I felt like we had like twenty-four clients per day was really pushing what I thought a lot of people's comfort was, thinking about what might be allowed next door. And I also remember like the six clients at a time was like the piano class, like the Pilates, right? And like what might be possible, but people didn't want necessarily a restaurant operating with twenty-four tables or ten tables, right, at a time, and then it comes and goes. Um and so I feel like there's, I I'm curious. I would really want to know what the, where that is a limitation for what somebody wants to do and what home occupation we haven't considered. I think though more than one non-resident employee, like I could imagine opening that up, but the conversation that we had back then was if we have twenty-four clients and we have another offside, um uh we have already one employee, non-resident employee, like what's this gonna look like? How many deliveries are we gonna be having? It was like the entire, like, what is the intensity now of this use? And so it's not the one, it's not one thing together, like that was part of that conversation. And so the so I'm, those three in the middle are the ones that I'm not sure about. And the allowing uses not customarily incidental and secondary to the residence use, the secondary to, I feel like is um I don't know that we should count this as an accessory use then. It feels like if it's not secondary to, then it is that it is not an accessory use. Where like, well, you can have all kinds of occupations. And if you just happen to be like, I don't know that it has to be something that like really has to be done from your home. So that's my recollection of the past and also the places where I think that there's opportunity to be responsive.
I should have reiterated this. Um Ms. DeLeo did hint at this, but the council did request that they see this again by this December. Uh, I don't know how much uh legislative body calendar math you all do. It's uh se- seems to be something that I I I do all day, every day. But to bring this forward to the city council, even by second December meeting, it's in a accelerated timeline to do uh the type of public engagement that I think would be good to do for this will request an ex- uh would require us to request an extension from city council. I have been thinking about that option anyway. So uh as we move forward to uh whether this comes to your working session or your November nineteenth meeting, well, um and actually I yeah, so it uh it may have to be either two-parter or something that we request an extension on or so we're still thinking about those those different parameters.
That's best. Christian Norton.
Yeah, just quickly, I know what time it is. I think asking for an extension would be a good thing. Um this is more weighty than what I think we can do quickly. It would also be helpful if you're collecting information. I don't even have a good sense of what the typical accessory uses are currently in the city, and I would be really curious to know what what were people requesting to do that they can't do that prompted the city council to ask us to revisit this in the first place? It would, it would be really helpful just to have a better idea. What are we trying to do here? What are they hoping that we're trying to do here? And what's not being allowed that maybe could be allowed if we loosen the standards? Just providing that kind of concretization of what's going on here would be really helpful for us to deliberate more. Thank you.
Yeah, I had similar questions of like, are they trying to, are we trying to do more Jefferson markets and neighborhoods with this? Or like, what is the the actual end goal? Like, I definitely think the home occupation thing probably could use a revamp, and I really like the idea of going and seeing like the changes that we made three years ago, like how is that panning out in reality? But what sparked this with them and like what is in their heads on council that they like, what is the angle here? I would also support asking for an extension because I think this is too important to try to jam through.
Okay, uh we are doing a review of other city ordinances and some literature review in the background that wasn't uh advanced enough to pre- to present for this discussion. Uh but we are trying to survey other codes and uh cities. I will I I have some sense of what was uh driving the interest from council, but I think that points to a larger project. I I think my unders- my understanding, although the letter of the resolution says to look at, you know, this thing, this thing, this thing, um that some of the the other discussion leads me to think there's an interest in more just commercial uses that are street-facing and accessible to pedestrians. To accomplish something like that, it's I think we're drifting more toward rethinking allowed uses in residential districts than liberalizing home occupations and trying to ride that line of what we, because you can have an accessory building with a home occupation as the use for that accessory building now. You can't have an accessory commercial unit of sorts now, but it is not necessarily, you know, it's not going to look like this because it wouldn't, this wouldn't meet many of our, I mean, this wouldn't meet our residential district regulations. So it's there 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 are a lot of questions that we have about how and then the the connection to the comprehensive plan that we're thinking about, but um so to be continued. I appreciate the thoroughly thoughts and um the feedback, the feedback here. Because we don't have a current permit for home occupation, some cities do. It does add a little bit of extra hindrance to yeah, um your ability to just do do this is as long as you're meeting our performance standards. We have opted not to collect information who has a home occupation through a permit. Um so that just means that there's no convenient way for me to like pull a list of people who have permitted home occupations and send them a met. You know, a note for it would for community engagement, I would have to be more broad-based.
Yeah, ev- even anecdotally, it might just help a little bit to know what's going on, would be fine. Thank you.
All right. I tend to agree that this feels more like a like the media was like, is this like you put a commercial use and it's not residential anymore in a neighborhood, so.
Right, because if you had the, because the max number of clients and so forth to make those enterprises function, it's moving closer and closer to just a different allowed use. Different conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um look forward to seeing this again, probably sooner rather than later. All right. So I think we are at the point of our second opportunity for public comment. So um it's our second opportunity for individuals to speak for up to three minutes on any issue. Um raise your hand in Zoom or be on the phone, press star nine. Any takers? All right. Then I think we are adjourned. See you guys in two weeks, two weeks. Bye.
Yeah, bye. Good night.